And everyone, so it's so nice to have you in the house this morning and help with Paulding County Government. I will call the Paulding County Work Session to order this April 25th, 2023. Ryan, if you bring the list up, please, for citizens wishing to speak, good time to turn your phone off. I just did that. Thanks, sir. Am I missing any elected officials? I always have to get y'all to help me with that. No, Tim, we didn't elect you yet. Always good to have you guys. Let's stand and begin with our invocation and our pledge. Heavenly Father, we're so thankful to be here this morning and to be able to conduct the business of the county. It's not November when we have Thanksgiving, but every day we're thankful that we have such great department heads in law enforcement, and we pray for protection over our law enforcement in the county. We just pray for our state and our nation and that we would turn towards you in every way. May we look for your wisdom this morning as we discuss things, in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The minutes, the April 11th, 2023 Work Session Minutes and the April 11th, 2023 Board Meeting Minutes and the April 20th, 2023 Joint Boards Meeting Minutes are available for review there on the back table. Our announcements in our Positively Paulding is a Team Paulding segment here, the different spring events that we've been enjoying. I love it. Good job, Jeff Harkins and your team in Public Information Office. Don't have any invited guests this morning. Under bid awards, item two is to award the 2023 Asphalt Project Contract III to the lowest bidder, Bartow Paving Company, Incorporated, in the amount of $2,866,353.65. The streets included in the contract are located in posts one, two, three, and four. The funding for the project will be allocated from general funds and SPOLOST funds. And we're going to hear from Erica. Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Our first item that we'd like to share with the board for consideration is the 2023 Asphalt Project Contract III. This project includes 13.31 miles of millings, patchings, levelings, and resurfaces of 61 streets within 12 subdivisions in Paulding County. On March 10th, 2023, five bids were received for the project and opened. DOT reviewed those five bids and recommended award to the lowest responsive bidder, Bartow Paving Company, Inc., in the amount of $2,866,353.65. Funding for this project will be allocated from general funds and SPOLOST. The low bid was 11.7% lower than the county's cost estimate. Again, the streets are located in all four posts, one, two, three, and four. The bids were within $500,000 of each other, and the next highest bid from the low bid was $288,000 more. And we would like the board to consider funding this project for the Contract III.
That's the first one. And item three is another one, the award of 2023 Asphalt Project Contract Number Four to the lowest responsive bidder, Bartow Paving Company, Incorporated, in the amount of $2, Streets included in the contract are located in posts one, two, and three. The funding for the project is general funds and SPOLOST.
Yes, sir. The second item is our 2023 Asphalt IV Contract. The project includes 12.5 miles of millings, patching, leveling, and resurfacing of 61 streets, of 66 streets, and 13 subdivisions with two non-subdivision streets in Paulding County. On March 10th, 2023, we had four bids received and opened. DOT reviewed all four of those bids and recommends award to the lowest responsive bidder, which is Bartow Paving Company, Inc., in the amount of $2,918,412.19. Funding for this project would be allocated from SPOLOST and general funds. The lowest bid was 14.5% lower than our engineer's cost estimate. The next highest bid was $353,000 more than the lowest bid, and all bids were within $531,000. And we would like to request the board to consider this item.
Thank you. If citizens that are watching online or that are in the room today wanted to see if their street was included, how would they do that?
So I think the bid item, under the bid opening, we would have that. But typically what we do is, once a contract has been awarded, we on our DOT webpage will add the contract after it's been approved, and we can add those lists of roads.
Any other questions for Ms. Parrish?
Erica, if you can, just for the people watching, can you kind of explain what the criteria is for these roads? Because I mean, we're looking at six, seven pages of roads that are going to be paid, just so everybody understands what the criteria is for a resurfacing project.
Yes, sir. So what DOT does, and with the help of our Comprehensive Transportation Plan, but then also with our inspectors daily, we yearly are out inspecting roads in the county. And as we inspect those roads, we look at multiple different things about the roads. Last time it was resurfaced, what the condition of the road is, looking at cracking, if it's alligator cracking, block cracking, just the different types of things that could make the road in disrepair. So as we do those, we ride those, we inspect those, we get out and walk them, we rate those roads. Usually it's on a five- to seven-year cycle when each road gets looked at. But as you rate those roads, you go in and you determine if it's very good condition, like in 90 to 100 scale, or if it's in extremely poor condition, maybe no asphalt, it's a zero to a 20. And we usually look at roads worst to first, best to worst. So if it's in the worst condition, we look at those roads first and try and put those roads before any of the other roads that we bring to the board for consideration. Yes, sir.
Thanks so much.
Yes, sir.
Item number four is to award contract with Bam Bam Hauling Solutions, LLC, for the standby paving and concrete work contract, providing services including paving, concrete work, and landscaping services over the next 12 months at a unit cost not to exceed $357,430. And Mr. Ray Wooton is going to share with us about this.
Good morning. We do repairs all over the county on our water system. And a year ago, a little over a year ago, we awarded this same contract to DAF, which is, did the same thing, that did the concrete work and the paving work, to combine to have one contractor on a site instead of having three different contractors come in. The water system worked with finance, and we got input from transportation to put together a bid again this year. And we had three bids come in from three different firms on March 3rd, and the low bidder for the standby paving and concrete work was Bam Bam Hauling Solutions at a contract limit not to exceed $357,430. Over the past, when you awarded the contract last year to DAF, it actually reduced our costs. In 2020, we spent $346,000. 2021, we spent $349,850. With DAF, we spent $341,000, even though we did an additional 220 leak repairs. So we think this is a good contract, and we are hoping the board will support and recommend the award to the lowest bidder, Bam Bam Hauling Solutions.
I was interested in the backup material, Ray. The two other bidders, I mean, this one was for $397,000. One of the other bids was over a million, and one of the bids was over $3 million. I'm just obviously concerned about what's such a huge difference.
What we had in the contract is we had different forms. We had large projects, medium projects, and small projects. Most of what we do is small projects. The $3 million award, they took all of their, we do 15 square yards as our minimum patch. And the price for the other two bidders for 15 square yards, one group proposed 6,500, Bam Bam was 3,500. But if you look on your bid tab page, the 3.5 million focused on $25,000 a patch, which means he was gearing his work more toward large projects, not so much the small projects that we do every day.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ray? Let's see, what's next here? Reports for committees and departments, we have no one who's signed up or called in. Well, that's public participation on agenda items, no one signed up. Item number five is the first consent agenda item, the only consent agenda item, which is to reappoint Lisa Lewis to the Northwest Georgia Region One Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council with a term from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Do any of the commissioners want to move that consent agenda item to regular business? We will leave it on the consent agenda. Under old business, we have none. Under new business, we have several items. Number six is to discuss action to adopt Resolution 23-08, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan Update for 2021 through 2050. And Ms. Parrish.
Good morning again. First, I'd like to thank the board for being so supportive of our Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Each one of y'all have taken a lot of time to work with us and our consultant, VHB. Regan Hammond is here. If there's any technical questions, I can answer. But we are very grateful for the hard work y'all have put into making our transportation plan update. Great. So very quickly, I just want to do just a real quick run-through of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. So this really, this project was a little bit unique for the Atlanta Regional Commission, and these are things you've heard before, but you can't help but brag sometimes when you do something first. So our plan was a joint plan for transportation and our comprehensive plan update, which is so important to make sure land use and transportation are hand in hand. So we are very excited that we were able to do this. But this is really our first, this is a full update of our Comprehensive Transportation Plan and our Comprehensive Plan Update. We developed these together. Again, this was our, this is the first go-around with the Atlanta Regional Commission that this has been done. We really worked with the cities, cities of Hiram and Dallas, to make sure we had their priorities included in this. And our comprehensive plan was actually adopted October of 2022. So what is the CTP? I like to call it a recipe book for me. It's really a plan to help me know, or our county to know, what the transportation priorities should be for the next five years, 15 years, out to 30 years. So Regan and her team really took a really deep dive into looking at so many different things. But they assessed transportation needs by going out to the public and talking to them, talking to our board, reaching out with polls, trying to make sure that we heard as much as possible from our citizens, from our different departments, but then also from y'all. We accessed existing conditions, so that goes back to the roadway conditions. What do our roads look like? What do our culverts look like? What do our bridges look like? How do we stay in a state of good repair? We identified multiple tiers of projects that should be considered over the next 30 years. We really work with ourselves, our regional partners. We update, this plan gets updated every five to eight years, and we really want to support the Comprehensive Plan. These are the different types of projects that we really focus on: intersection improvements, operational upgrades, capacity projects, new roads, asset management, looking at studies to help us work with our federal and state partners to add projects to their programs so that we can go after federal and state dollars. Bridges are always important. We need to make sure they're in good repair. And then bicycle and pedestrians, sidewalks, we're getting a lot more requests for sidewalks in the county. So this is just a very quick snippet of countywide recommendations, short range, mid-range, and long range. And this is just a zoned-in picture. Short-range recommendations, of course, State Route 92, some street scape work in some of the cities. We're looking at Harmony Grove Road Extension, look at the connections to the new school that's being constructed. 278 operational and safety improvements within Dallas and Hiram, a lot of intersections that are almost ready to be let for construction, and some that are in early stages. Wind Road shoulder improvements. Neebo Road safety improvements. Mid-range, some highlights are going to be the State Route 61 widening project, Dallas Akworth widening, which would look at most of Dallas Akworth, some of the areas in the New Hope area, up towards Mount Tabor, up into State Route 92, widening of portions of 278 in Dallas and Hiram, looking at Pine Valley, at Sweetwater Creek, bridge replacement. And then really, some long-range projects are really focusing in on 278 capacity, safety and operational type projects, and then looking at ways where you may not be able to get the capacity, to consider parallel roads or some type of frontage road connections. And then looking at some railroad safety improvements. Again, we heard a lot about sidewalks, multi-use paths, so this is a really quick visual of some of the locations that were identified and have been mapped for our Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And then study areas. We know that the county is growing by leaps and bounds. Some roads have been identified as needing some love, either operational and safety-wise or capacity. And then we know there's areas in the county where we don't have great connections, so we need to consider what those connections should look like. So these are a few projects that were identified and passed CTPs that have been delivered. This was a joint project with Douglas County. This is Sweetwater Church Road, Bakers Bridge Road, Doris Road, and High Point Intersection Improvement. It was a multiway stop that was converted to a traffic signal with right and left turn lanes. Previous CTP was Ridge Road at Corin Store Road, Bob Hunt and Road Roundabout. This was again, a multiway stop that was converted to a roundabout. And this is Dallas Akworth Highway Bridge over Possum Creek, and then Dallas Akworth Highway over Picketts Mill Creek. So next steps are what we have done to date. The city of Dallas adopted the plan April 10th, and the city of Hiram adopted the plan April 11th. Once and if the board adopts the plan, our next steps would be to share the document, the final version out, with the public and stakeholders. We'll upload this onto our website. We'll coordinate with our partners, Georgia DOT, Atlanta Regional Commission, to make sure they have all the information that we've done, make sure it's loaded into their programs, and then we'll just monitor implementation and progress, look at system performance, and conduct additional studies and updates as required from the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And with that, I'm here, Regan's here. If you have any specific questions about the Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
Just one comment. This goes out through 2050, and I know Commissioner Stover will be very healthy by then. I'm not sure I can last that long.
Well...
Nobody has any questions. I know the board would like to thank Regan and our Department of Transportation, Paulding County Department of Transportation, and also the Community Development End. So thank you all very much.
Okay. So now, I'll ask for you to adopt it. So I'm going to give you a little bit more information, if that's okay. So with this plan, the board adopted or approved the contract with VHB, and on November 4th, 2021, we issued a notice to proceed to VHB and their team with Croy and Blue Cypress. And again, this is pretty much a planning transportation study that looks at all modes of transportation in the county. It helps identify desires and needs of all modes of transportation. It assists in supporting recommendations and strategies in local government, the Atlanta Regional Commission, or Commission and Georgia Department of Transportation and Federal Highway. The project management team did a great job with public outreach. We held multiple meetings. There were four stakeholder committee meetings, two multi-jurisdictional working groups that Ann helped coordinate with her groups. We had three public meetings, three pop-up events, and multiple presentations to the board, and one-on-ones with the board and with the cities. The update includes a financially constrained, short-range action plan for transportation projects for the years 2024 to '28. Then the mid-range is '29 to '2040, and then long range is '41 out to '2050. And this helps incorporate identified embedded projects into both the state and federal project delivery programs that helps us go after funding for projects so our citizens aren't paying as much money for improvements in the county on transportation. The adoption of the CTP update by the Board of Commissioners does support the CTP update recommendations and strategies for the locals, for the Atlanta Regional Commission, and the state transportation future decisions, and we would like to request that the board consider this adoption.
We most certainly will. Thanks, Erica. Now, the next agenda item, it's one of my favorite ever, and our county manager does a great job putting the agenda items together. But this, this one is, discuss action to adopt Resolution 7309 to amend Association of County Commissioners of Georgia to find benefit plan for Paulding County employees. And we've got Ms. Tara Palmer to report.
Good morning. How are you? So recently, the Board of Commissioners approved the transition from VALEC to ACCG. And what this is going to do is this allows us to, as a recruitment tool, to allow future employees to transfer in services from other counties. So if Bartow, for example, has our plan, they can transfer those services here, those years of services, and start their time accruing here. Same thing, if someone left Paulding County, they went to Bartow, Douglas County, they can transfer those years of service to ACCG and not have to start from the bottom. So I think this is a great retention, recruitment tool and retention, something that we've never had before. So this is an enhancement to our retirement plan. And we've had several applicants ask, do you accept our years of service? And hopefully now we can say yes. So do y'all have any questions?
I want to thank you for all the work that you have put into this. I think it's going to be a great program if it gets approved.
It will.
Anything else?
I'm the next one, too, so I was just going to stay here.
Item eight is discuss action to approve the contract with the CTP, the implementation of software for a time care system for Paulding County employees, in the amount of $107,011.13. The funding will come from the general fund. Ms. Palmer.
So we started this process back in December. The county manager, we put together a team. It was the county manager, the finance director, and her team, IT, his team, our team, and then two commissioners. We interviewed three different vendors for this program, and we've come up with CTP, which is known as Time Clock Plus. We feel that'll be the best vendor in order to work with us. Basically, let me, I mean, right now, our last payroll, we pay 1,298 people. The county now has 52 different departments. And so this type of system is going to help us cut down on errors, be more efficient, and have a consistency within our timekeeping system. Right now, we don't have that. So this is going to kind of help bring that all in-house. And then over in finance, we have two ladies that do payroll. And then in each department, you've got one to two people that do payroll, and they're spending anywhere from two to three hours doing payroll when it closes. So this is going to cut down on that as well and free up time for them to do other things. And also, it's going to make employees more responsible and accountable for their time.
Y'all got any questions?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. I mean, I was very surprised when I found out we didn't even have time clocks to begin with. So I mean, just a small business such as myself, when I transferred from manual to time clock, the difference, I was, you know, kind of, I just started thinking the other day, whoever this woman is that is doing this, the two people?
Michelle and Wendy. She does a fantastic job.
She's awesome. It has to be, to do that many people. So, yeah. Anyway, thank you. I know a couple commissioners worked on a lot, and I got one or two of the meetings, but, you know, it was eye-opening to me to see that we didn't even have it in place already, so.
It is. Well, Erica just said, you know, we're one of the fastest-growing areas, and that means more people, more employees, and that's, this is just one way to make the county more efficient. You know, our goal is to have it December 1st, but we're going to make it happen hopefully by September 1st. So if you guys approve it today, we've already got the process started for tomorrow. So hopefully, we're going to get this implemented and hopefully make everybody's life a little bit easier when it comes to payroll.
Tara, I guess I do have a question, mainly for the benefit of people in the room and that are watching, to be aware that this isn't just people in this building or just administrative people.
No, it'll cover every county employee. So this is going to be your fire, your sheriff, DOT, anything that falls under the Board of Commissioners will use this system. And we've got several different ways that people are going to be able to clock in, time clocks, you're going to be able to use your phone, you're going to be able to use your tablet if you work out in the field. We have put in here to have manual time clocks if needed, but it's going to be convenient. It's very user-friendly, so I think the employees will like it.
And also, where even people in the judicial system are included.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, Sheriff's Office, judicial system, it's going to go throughout the county.
Yeah. It's going to be great. Any other questions?
I have a question. It seems to me that we should include the entire cost in here because there are recurring costs of about $42,000 a year that are not listed here for that 10-year period, so that is a significant amount over $107,000. So I hope we get return on investment. I never really saw any numbers. I heard explanations, but I didn't see actual numbers of what it's costing us to do it the way we do it now, so.
Okay. Well, yeah, we can make that note if we need to.
Just to be clear, the price, the $107,111.13, that is a price for which component of the system?
That is our startup fee. That's going to be everything that was listed.
Okay. So that's just the startup fee, but there's a recurring cost, is what Commissioner Galloway was referring to?
There's going to be an annual cost. It's going to be the maintenance. They do 24/7 support, so that's going to be one of the costs that you were talking about, and also just the general software that we have to pay for, time clock.
Isn't there insurance?
Isn't there insurance or certificate or something that we have to renew every year as well, something?
There's a license that we have.
License, yeah. Oh, yeah, we have to purchase license for every employee. So we're purchasing 1,200. So that way, when someone terminates or new hire, that'll kind of balance it out.
And if I can mention, this is pretty typical for a program where you have a recurring software issue. Every year, you have an update and license that you have to do. So this is pretty typical of a contract.
If I'm looking at these line items right, on the $107,000 proposal table, it looks like it includes one year's worth of.
It does, it includes the first year.
The contract fee, yeah.
Yeah, that is correct.
So total, this would be, if you count the nine years of $42,000, it would be closer to half a million dollars than 107. I just, I wasn't in on those conversations, so I just hope that the juice is worth the squeeze here.
I think in the long run, it will be, because it's going to make it, I mean, like I say, the more employees that we're going to add, and we cannot continue to do paper. I mean, we're doing paper or timesheets right now on spreadsheets. I mean, we have to house those spreadsheets. I mean, that's a cost. And then also too, I'm not really tapped as more about this, but you know, when we do, when we have like disasters that happen, if you've got FEMA and you've got things like that, that you've got to pull reports, we can actually isolate the public safety people, and it's going to make it much easier for us to pull reports and things like that, so we can get those reimbursements. A lot of things we do, we do with unemployment, I have to isolate certain employees, so that's going to make it easier for me to pull timesheets. I'm not going to have to contact Michelle and say, "Hey, can you go dig in a box and pull these timesheets for me?" I'm going to have access to all that information. So it's going to make those processes a lot easier when we have to pull numbers and things like that, because that's something that we manually have to do right now, so. I think in the long run, yes, it will pay off.
Well, like Frank said, I mean, any program you buy, you got to pay, buy licenses and stuff, I mean.
I mean, anything that we use, we have to, you know, you have to pay those fees for.
Thanks so much, Tara, great report. Let me move into the IT world here. Item nine is, "Discuss action to approve the refresh and upgrade of the Solocom Guardian 911 telephone system from AT&amp;T in the amount of $487,898 to be paid from 911 fees." David Mumford?
Morning.
Morning.
So this is a refresh and upgrade of the 911 telephone system. We went with the Solocom Guardian system back in 2010, and about every five to seven years, we have to refresh the system. And it replaces all the servers, it replaces all the PCs, all the stuff that normally will wear out in a computer system. And we do this before the system fails, so it's a mission-critical system. So other than our radio system, this is probably our most mission-critical system that we have, because this is how we process all the 911 calls that come in. All the text 911, administrative lines, they all go through this system, so. This, the last refresh, we made it geo-redundant, so that we have a set of servers here, and we have a set of servers at the primary center. And so this refreshes both of these systems. It brings everything up to the new standards, and it, a couple of upgrades included in this project. We'll put all-new, eight complete telephones positions in this building at the backup site. And it will finish out, we'll add two positions in the emergency operations center, and it finishes out the positions we have at the primary site that we don't have phone positions at. So this gives us a complete upgrade of all of our systems. It adds automatic call distribution, which is a easier or better way for us to process 911 calls as they come in. And it gives us a different way to, like a next-generation MIS, where we can run reports and get stats a lot more accurately than how we do now, so. And we are paying this out of 911 fees, and it's the amount of $487,898. And AT&amp;T holds our contract for this.
Any questions for David? Another good report, thanks, sir. Item 10 is, "Discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a development agreement with Four Star USA Real Estate Group, Incorporated, for the intersection improvements to accommodate the development by the developer realigning Dooley Road through the Thompson Ridge subdivision and accessing Gullidge Road, located in Post 4." And Mr. Jones fell in. Deputy Erica, thank you for reporting on this.
Yes, sir. So this item is a development agreement with Four Star for the Thompson Ridge subdivision. Thompson Ridge subdivision is located adjacent to Dooley Road and Gullidge Road in Post 4. Originally, when Thompson Ridge come through zoning, the entrance was too closely spaced to the existing Dooley Road, Gullidge Road entrance, to allow for proper access spacing and access management. And the Dooley Road intersection currently is substandard in geometrics that comes in at a skew and has no turn lanes. It was decided to eliminate the Dooley Road intersection and realign Dooley Road to access Gullidge through the subdivision. Part of the zoning stipulations require that the owner developer enter to a development agreement with the county for intersection improvements to accommodate this subdivision entrance, realigning or aligning Dooley Road to enter through the subdivision. A memorandum of understanding was originally signed with the original developer, which was Calvin Thompson, and executed on November of 2020. Since that date, the county DOT has worked with the developers through the engineering plans, and plans have currently been approved, and construction of the development is underway with Four Star USA Real Estate Group having purchased this development. During the development review process, the county worked on a solution for the intersection improvements, which realigned Dooley Road to tie into Thompson Ridge subdivision. And the development agreement requires that the road realignment take place prior to final plat, phase one, being approved by the county or signed. And we would recommend that the board consider entering into this development agreement with Four Star USA Real Estate Group, Inc., for intersection improvements to accommodate the development by the developer by realigning Dooley Road through the Thompson Ridge subdivision and accessing Gullidge Road through that subdivision.
Erica, we have an estimated cost yet?
No, sir. It's their cost, so we, yes, sir, 100%.
That's what I like to hear.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, item 11 is, "Discuss action to approve a project funding allotment increase in the amount of $75,000 for the completion of the State Route 120 at State Route 120 Connector Intersection Improvement Project." This would be to Barto Paving Company, and the allotment increase will be funded by SPOS, the projects located in Post 2.
Yes, sir. So this project was originally awarded to the contractor, Barto Paving Company, Inc., in the amount of $399,526.88 for the construction of State Route 120 at 120 Connector on April the 26th of 2022. It consisted of adding right and left turn lanes off of State Route 120 onto Scoggins Road. Georgia DOT actually committed $200,000 to this project through their quick-response program. We issued a notice to proceed to Barto Paving, May 26th of 2022, with the completion, construction completion date scheduled for May 25th of 2023. Through the course of the construction of this project, badsoles were found in the area that we had to remove from the project. They were not initially identified or considered when the cost estimate was put together, so we have cost for that, along with, we have some construction cost overruns for some items that were not estimated correctly, which includes some GAB and some asphalt quantities. The funding needed to complete the project is approximately $75,000, which is an 18.7% overrun of the total contract, and SPOS funds would be utilized for this allotment request. DOT would request that the board consider approving the requested funding allotment request of $75,000.
I don't think there's any question on that one, Erica. Thanks for the good report. So we'll go on to 12. Discuss action to approve a funding commitment with the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount not to exceed $900,000 for a single-lane roundabout project located at the intersection of State Route 6 Business. That's Merchants Drive, Macklin Road, and Butler Industrial Drive, where they all come together. The funding will be from SPOS, it's located in Post 1. And Ms. Parrish?
Yes, sir. So this item is for a funding commitment letter request for the intersection of State Route 6 Business, Macklin Road and Butler Industrial Drive, which is partially within the city limits of Dallas and in Post 1. The intersection currently operates as a signal, which suffers from delays and backups due to the large amount of traffic that comes through the intersection and some of the geometrics that are a little deficient in that location. Currently, we have this project programmed in our SPOS, we have $650,000 allocated to that project. The county also actively has a design project for this location. However, the project that we have in conceptual phase is for a traffic signal and a realignment of the intersection. However, during discussions with the Georgia Department of Transportation, their preference for the project, after reviewing the traffic numbers and the concepts, is to go with a roundabout at this location. We have discussed the intersection with Georgia DOT a few different times, and because the project is a roundabout and the amount it would cost them to build the roundabout, without county funding for the project, it doesn't rank high enough on their benefit cost to move forward with the project. So they have requested that the county consider putting some funding towards this project to make it a higher benefit cost, so that it could be included in their program to move this project forward. So with that, they've requested that the county input 900, or commit to $900,000 to help move this project forward. Currently, the preliminary engineering, if we're able to do that, is scheduled for fiscal year 2024 and potentially a lead date of 2027, with an overall cost estimate for the project around $3 million. DOT would recommend that we move forward with this funding commitment letter towards the project, and would ask for the board's support on that.
You guys do such a great job on these, and I was just looking at the single-lane roundabout. It seems like there's a lot of busy roads there. Macklin is certainly busy, and I definitely see a need for that. Is a single lane going to be enough? And if it's enough for now, but we anticipate it may not be in the future, is it possible to expand a roundabout to make it a double lane, for instance?
They could. Right now, the projections are for 10 to 15 years out. They expect the roundabout to function well. But if we needed to look at expansion further, we could after that.
On the line item, on the cost breakout, Erica, I see engineering's reimbursable right-of-way construction. Does that include right-of-way acquisition?
It would, yes, sir.
It does? You've been a busy lady today.
Yes, sir.
I go through that intersection at least twice a day, and I can't remember in the backup reading if it had any crash history there.
I'm not sure that we included that, but we can pull that for you, sir. Can you share that?
Can we include a line item for complaint calls if this happens?
We could.
Thanks so much, Erica.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Item 13 is, "Discuss action to adopt ordinance 23-06, adopting amendments to Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances regarding procedures before the Animal Control Hearing Board and requirement for classified dogs." County Attorney Mr. Jason Phillips.
Commissioners, this is a, these are amendments related to a process that is set out by state law regarding our Animal Control and Animal Control Hearing Board. When a dog, when there's a dog bite incident, the Animal Control Department has the authority to investigate the facts surrounding the dog bite, and then to make a classification as to whether or not that dog should be classified as a dangerous dog or a vicious dog, vicious being more severe than a dangerous dog. When that classification is made, there are certain restrictions that are placed upon an animal that has the classification. If an owner disagrees with the classification, that owner has the right to file an appeal with the Animal Control Hearing Board. The Hearing Board will then review the decision made by Animal Control and either sustain it, modify it, or reverse it. These amendments that are before you today are some tightening of our county ordinance and some changes to our procedures that we feel are in order based upon a recent case that the Animal Control Hearing Board had. First off, to just highlight the changes. Under state law, a vicious dog has to have a six-foot leash, and it has to be muzzled. The vicious dog is the more severe category. These changes here will require, at the county level, for a dangerous dog to also have with it the muzzle requirement in addition to the six-foot leash requirement. The amendments will require that if you have a dangerous dog and you are going to donate it, or transfer it, or sell it to somebody else, that you are required by law to notify that person that they are acquiring or receiving a dangerous dog, and that when you do transfer ownership, that that notification goes to Animal Control. The proposed amendments are also going to require that a tenant who is in possession of a dangerous or vicious dog is going to have a requirement now to notify their landlord that there's one of those dogs on the premises. The reason here is that there are many insurance policies out there that exclude people that are covered by the policies from having in their possession classified animals. So this will be a clear thing to put them on notice, and hopefully, if they're going to continue to have the animals, that the insurance company will provide the coverage for that. Let's see here. Notification is going to be done by what we call statutory overnight delivery. Currently, under state law, we're only required to do it by certified mail. What we've experienced really since COVID is that there is a, there's a backup of certified mail. We, and I know in my law firm, we're not getting the notifications back that we used to get from the green cards. In the most recent one, we sent out certified mail to the dog owner, and we were never able to receive back any confirmation that the dog owner received notice of the hearing. This is called statutory overnight delivery, which is basically overnight FedEx or overnight UPS or some other overnight service. The advantage there is that we'll have proof and confirmation of delivery. It costs a little bit more, but you can guarantee that that person has at least had their notice delivered. Finally, there's going to be a requirement that if you do request a hearing, you actually need to show up and appear before the Animal Control Hearing Board in person to present the arguments that you want them to consider. The Animal Control Board is convening, and just like in a court case, they expect the parties involved to actually come to the proceeding and present their case. This amendment will say that if somebody does not show up for their hearing or elects not to come in person for some reason, then the underlying decision of the Animal Control Board will simply be sustained. And that is the scope of the proposed changes. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
I like the concept, and I think it's great, and all the details. The only thing I thought of afterwards was, what about, is there any ordinance in place for people who dump dogs out? And I know we lived on a dirt road when I was younger, and we got so many good dogs that way. But there weren't so many vicious dogs back in that day, and I'm concerned that somebody might jettison a dog that has been called vicious or dangerous. And is there any kind of thing in our laws right now? This is just a question. I don't know that we need to add anything to this or not, but is there something right now that would make it illegal? but is there something right now that would make it illegal? I mean, I know it's illegal to dump dogs anyway, but some extra thing for this kind of dog? Because I could see a real danger to our community.
Absolutely. We have, as you identified, on the, on the general abandonment of an animal, we do have an ordinance that prohibits that. But as to a vicious or dangerous dog, if those dogs are housed or abandoned in any manner that's outside of state law, that is a state law violation. So the good thing is those people will be, they're not going to be prosecuted at the ordinance level. They're going to be prosecuted at the next level up, either in state or superior court.
Are dangerous dogs or, what's the other one? Vicious dogs, are they required to have chips so that we know who they are?
That's a great question. I believe that a vicious dog is required by state law to have a chip. A dangerous dog is not. And while we're talking about it, we're throwing out these terms vicious and dangerous dog. A dangerous dog is one that may bite you, but you don't, no, you don't get a serious injury. It may aggress, it may attack you, but you're not injured by it, or it may kill another's pet, all right? If it falls into that category, it's a dangerous dog. The vicious dog is a dog that, that causes serious injury. Serious injury is defined by state law. It includes details like lacerations, disfigurement, death, the more serious. That's, that's really, at least what I've seen so far from the animal control hearing board. One of the threshold, threshold questions is, is what this dog did dangerous or vicious? But it's, animal control's done a real good job of, of getting those in front of us so that the animal control board, which is a five-member board, can decide how to handle it on appeal.
So do you attend the board meetings?
Yes, I, I attend the board meetings. Y'all did an amendment last year. We used to have the chairperson of the board run the, run the hearing, and y'all did an amendment last year to, to basically make the county attorney serve as the, as a hearing officer. So the county attorney, I don't render any sort of decision in the matter, but I try to make the hearing move along so that the five board members can really focus on the evidence as opposed to four of them focusing on the evidence and one trying to think about what they're supposed to do next. I'll handle that side, and they'll handle the crux of what they're there for.
I think probably Commissioner Galloway stimulated another question in my mind. And when you read the description of the vicious dog and what the injury would be, why wouldn't that be put the dog down?
There are some avenues for euthanasia, for putting the dog down. The board itself does not have the independent authority to put a dog down unless I think that there are two incidents of serious biting, and then animal control at any time, we have the authority to go to superior court and get an order from the judge there for euthanasia. And that's, that's, that is outside the scope and authority that animal control has to put dogs down that are in their custody through other means already.
Yeah, and I appreciate you guys being proactive on this. I dealt with this recently, and I think that was the reason of some of this, because it took months to get the thing heard, to get the case heard. And in this particular case, it wasn't so much an individual got hurt, but another animal got almost maimed. And that may not be important to some, but it is very important to others. And hopefully, by you guys being proactive, and I appreciate everything you did, Eileen, to help me with that. But hopefully, you guys being proactive will help expedite clarity for someone that is victimized by this. So, thank you, guys.
Other comments? Well, that's the conclusion of regular business. No one signed up for non-agenda items, and it's the time we normally reserve for announcements or celebrations or comments. And I'm going to go first. Commissioner Galloway and I had the opportunity to go with Colonel Hutton to a Celebrate Recovery Wild Game Dinner on Saturday night. And one of the reasons we went is because the Board of Commissioners as a whole had a proclamation to present to Tom Payne, who's the Celebrate Recovery Director at Hiram First Baptist Church. And he sent me this short email yesterday. Chairman Carmichael, on behalf of Hiram First Baptist Church, I want to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners for the proclamation recognizing me and Hiram First Baptist Church Saturday night at the Wild Game Dinner for the Celebrate Recovery program we have done weekly for the past 14 years at the Paulding County Jail. We have helped many find inpatient recovery programs, parentheses, paying up to $500 to get them started, close parentheses. This has helped many detainees become productive citizens. Gratefully yours, Tom Payne. Anybody else? Ooh, it's delicious.
The food was good, but more importantly, I, I think it's awesome that in several churches in our area as the result of Mr. Payne's work, have this Celebrate Recovery. As we visited with the judges last week, I understand that the drunk drivers here in Paulding County are considerably drunker than drunk drivers elsewhere and when they're stopped. And so I would just recommend to anybody who wants help before, before you get to jail. He works with people in jail, but he also works with people out of, out that are just, need help. And I would commend the program to you, that you might want to check it out. I don't think it's any obligation to check that out. And they meet on Monday nights at Hiram, and they meet at other churches at other times. But I would just recommend that you maybe find their website or get in touch and get the information on that. Thank you.
I'm having a town hall at the airport on May 18th at 6:00. It will be on our economic development plus, but I would love to see you all there.
Look forward myself. Other comments?
I'm sorry, I would be remiss if I didn't thank everybody who came to our post three, including a lot of our department heads. They did a great job. And we had a town hall over at Taylor Farm Park. It was well attended, and I'm, I'm sure CNDs will be great too.
And the topic was?
Well, the Highway 92, interesting things going on around it. Economic development, of course, water and sewer, and the Taylor Farm Park upcoming facelift that we're working on right now. You'll hear more about that in a future meeting, we hope, soon.
All right then, that, we, it's the conclusion, and no executive session required today, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourned by Mr. Kaker. I'll second. All those in favor say aye. And the opposed, we stand adjourned.